Okay, good evening, everybody. Sorry for the delay. We were in executive session to discuss strategies with a whole bunch of things that we can't talk about in public, so we just broke from there and here we are. So, sorry that we're running significantly late. I assure you, I will do my best to get us back on agenda. First of all, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public forum. Residents are invited to share ideas, opinions, or ask questions regarding town government. Is there anyone here that wants to say anything in public forum? Seeing none. Staff recognition. The Select Board will recognize Toni Alexander, Senior Library Assistant, who is retiring, retiring, with 31 years of service to the town. Hi, Maria.
Good evening.
Where's Toni?
So, on behalf of Heather, who couldn't be here tonight, the library director, as well as Toni, who could not be here tonight, Margie is here from the trustees and I'm here on behalf of Toni to accept her congratulations.
Okay. So, I've known Toni for the vast majority of my life. She is absolutely an awesome person, a great asset to the town, and the town will severely miss having her around. I know that she is that first smiling face when you come into the library and absolutely awesome. I'm very, very sad that she isn't here for me to throw my accolades at her. I know it would make her feel very uncomfortable, which makes me want to throw more accolades at her. So, I would give a heartfelt congratulations from me personally, from the board, and from the town. Thank you very much for 31 years of her service, and she will be greatly missed, and it would be very hard to replace her. All right?
Thank you.
Great, thank you. I'm very angry that she isn't here for me to embarrass her.
I'm sure you'll see her.
You have opportunities to do that another time.
Great. Girl Scout troop number 684, I'm sorry, 68243, Silver Award Project presentation. Four eighth grade cadets, Eva Papalardo, Sabrina Russo, did I say that right? Okay, great, thank you. Charlotte Schuster and Holly Thompson will present their Silver Award project to the Select Board. The project focuses on fostering an attitude of gratitude at the middle school and their community. A big part of their project will be offering several workshops in the children's room at the Hopkin and Public Library. Alyssa Thompson is the Girl Scout leader. Good evening, girls. How are you?
Good.
How are you?
Good. How do you guys feel sitting here on TV, talking in front of hundreds and thousands of people? So, welcome. Thank you very much. So, Alyssa, you're the lead on this. Why don't you, is, oh, you're Alyssa? All right.
I thought I could hide through this.
I'm not saying that you don't look like you're a Girl Scout, but why don't you tell us a little bit about it? A quick little intro, and then we'll let the girls tell us.
Absolutely. This process all started last year, actually. The Silver Award Project is a, it's just a fantastic opportunity for the girls to get together and make a difference. And we started discussions of this last spring, trying to figure out what would be viable. We had some interviews with various people and discovered that it was a project that we really wanted to take on, and they have a lot to tell you. So, attitude of gratitude has been something I think has really started to take shape.
Awesome.
Thank you so much for having them.
You're welcome. Thank you. So, you will see, what you see on the TV is what the people at home see, so know that when you're doing your thing, I'm going to be making faces at you, trying to make you smile and make you laugh. So, but welcome. Please go ahead and tell us a little bit about what's going on.
I'm Sabrina.
I'm Holly.
I'm Eva.
I'm Charlotte.
Okay.
We are Hopkin and Girl Scout, eighth grade cadet Girl Scout troop 68243. Thank you very much for this opportunity to share our Silver Award Project and attitude of gratitude. Our goal in this project is to teach the Hopkin community about physical and emotional benefits of having a grateful heart. With special attention given to the Hopkin Middle School and working with the young children and children at the Hopkin and Public Library, gratitude really makes us more happy than anything we have.
Gratitude is an amazing property of the human mind. The more gratitude we feel, the happier we'll be. Gratitude helps us to reduce stress and increase productivity. It makes us feel much better about ourselves and others. But one of our very first thoughts in our project was how? How could one positive emotion impact our lives so greatly? It all starts with one powerful chemical called oxytocin, also known as one of the happiest hormones. This hormone can be triggered naturally through being with friends, family, playing sports, and lots more. One main thing that triggers oxytocin is gratitude. When participating in grateful activities, such as writing consistently in gratitude journals and making gratitude rocks, our relaxation levels increase dramatically. We become more energized and our sleep quality even increases. But the key to a grateful heart lies in the repetition. The more we show our gratitude, the more grateful we will be. To work towards our project's goals, we did some online research. We then met with psychologists Elizabeth Daniels and Kim Manning last spring in their Hopkin offices to learn all about the positive effects of gratitude and created the trifold you see here to help us share about our subject.
Next, we met with Ms. Ben Bennick, Assistant Principal and Ms. Grady, eighth grade English teacher and gratitude guru at Hopkin Middle School to determine the best ways to deliver our message to the school. Since then, we set up a table at back-to-school night, constructed flyers with gratitude facts, and posted them throughout the middle school. And the art department contribute beautiful student art to the gratitude-themed display in the main lobby. Most recently, the guidance department allowed us to contribute to Random Acts of Kindness Week by making and distributing 1,000 inspirational sticky notes for school lockers, creating gifts and gratitude bookmarks for English teachers and their students, and hosting an educational table where students and teachers wrote 70 thank-you notes to the office staff, school nurses, and custodial and cafeteria staff. We've had many opportunities to reach the Hopkin community about our message about gratitude. We created gratitude rocks with fun sings, and at the annual Girl Scout Fall Sing, we had children decorate them. These rocks helped to remind people to think about a few things they are grateful for each day. Thanks to the hospitality of the Hopkin Public Library, we are allowed to display our project in the lobby there and held gratitude-filled raffles, which we have since distributed to three lucky residents. At Caroling on the Common, we displayed our project and sold gratitude ornaments. On Martin Luther King Day, we hosted a table where people could write thank-you notes to give to friends, families, and teachers. We also talked about how wonderful the Respite Center is and gave people the opportunity to leave them thank-you notes as well.
We have many gratitude projects to come. We are happy to say that we will host workshops at the Hopkin Public Library on these three dates, March 16th, 23rd, and 30th, for grades K-5, from 3:30 to 4:30 upstairs in the children's room. We work with the kids to show them how gratitude works and how they can use it in their lives. We will do activities like crafts with gratitude rocks, gratitude journals, thank-you cards, and fun books they can read. We are excited to host a table at HMS March 20th, Rise Up Day, with information on the Respite Center, for which our troop is especially thankful for. We plan to make a permanent appreciation station at the middle school, where kids can write to their friends or teachers, and also hope to make an online gratitude journal with gratitude prompts that kids can write in and reflect every day. We're trying to make a sustainable project that can stick with people in this community. Thank you for listening, and I hope everyone can incorporate gratitude into their everyday lives.
Do you have a poster we'd like to share with you, some of our favorite parts of this project, and we can answer questions then?
That's awesome. Very nicely done, girls, very nicely done. Mary Jo, why don't you start us off?
Okay. Well, I want to congratulate you, and particularly with the theme, attitude and gratitude. We need a lot more of that right now. I was going to ask you, what are you doing with your posters after today?
We display many of our posters at the Hopkin Middle School, which is where we go to school, along with some beautiful art displays completed by students at the school.
We have elections right now, and we have people coming in and out of the town hall every day for another week, and I would love to see you put them in the front hall, here at Town Hall, for a week, and then you can take them to the school. Would that be okay?
Yes, that would be great.
And that is all right with you? You can put them down there?
I do believe we make the rules, so yes.
And in fact, through the chair, I also want to take this opportunity to thank you for coming to Town Hall. I remember when I came in contact with you on MLK Day and extended the invitation for you to come before the border, and I told you everything would be fine. So far, you've done fantastically well. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'm looking forward to when I come in and work at the polls, to seeing them as they go by and taking a look at them, and I think the citizens of Hopkin for the early voting would like to do that too. So, I thank you for allowing us to have them for a few days, and then you can come and get them and take them back. But congratulations, it's a very timely subject, and I think you're doing a wonderful job. Thank you, girls.
Thank you.
Mr. Nasrullah.
I'm in complete agreement with everything that Mary Jo just said. I would love to see this in Town Hall, but I'll tell you what really warms my heart about this, is today, with social media and the mean streak that you see in kids, you guys, you girls have come forward and said, "Let's be positive, and let's be thankful for things," and that warms my heart. That tells me that our youth is still in good shape, and you're looking positively towards things. So, I think this is fantastic. I think it's a good thing to wake up every day and remind yourself of what are you happy about.
Thank you so much.
Yep, so, both my colleagues, I will echo their sentiments. It's not easy to come up and sit in front of a microphone. Maybe it is for you guys, I don't think it is for most kids your age, to sit and talk and be on camera and just sit there with your smiles the whole time. It's a wonderful thing to see you guys, and you did a great job, and the project was wonderful. And so, kudos go to you, but kudos also go to your parents. So, your parents have done a very good job raising you, and we're very glad in the town to have people like you. So, that just got you like a half an hour on your curfew in a couple years. Don't make me have to call in a favor with the police. So, you guys have done a great job, and we're lucky to have kids like you in the community. You guys are the ones that in 20 years will come sit here and say, "I've lived in town my whole life," and hopefully you can be more educated than some of these guys here, so, meaning me, no offense. So, you guys do an awesome job. Thank you very much. And like Mary Jo said, post that here, and then when we're done, when you're done here, take it up to the schools. So, thank you guys very much.
Thanks so much.
Is there a way to get you guys over here for a picture?
There is.
Thank you.
I'll make a deal with you if there's a way for you to get Mr. Toni.
I don't do deals.
It's quid pro quo.
This is for me?
No, it's for Toni.
Marie's gonna... Behind the girls? Oh, over there. Okay, sure. Right, again. Bring your posters, please. Bring your posters, yeah. Super nice, man. I'm being modest, you know, because you can't...
No, no, it's okay. We'll let the press work their magic, and then we'll let your parents get them. We've got a good angle.
That's right.
Homework on three.
Thank you.
Do your parents want to take some shots there?
What's up?
My child's on the camera.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, girls. Take care.
Thank you.
All right. So, now, now we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda items are: Approve the January 30, February 4, February 12 Select Board minutes. Accept the $2,500 gift from Unibank and $25,000 gift from Friends of Seniors for nutrition and wellness programs at the Senior Center. Accept a $100 gift from the Women's Club to support the purchase of books for the children's room at the Hopkin and Public Library. Approve a parade permit for the annual Global 6K Water Road Race on May 16. Approve a parade permit for the 14th Annual Max Performance Triathlon on May 9 and September 13. Approve a temporary banner over Main Street from March 16 to March 30 for the Hopkin and Women's Club. And approve a sandwich board sign for the Hopkin and Women's Club on West Main Street near the Welcome to Hopkin sign in advance of the March 7 event. Would any member like to break any items out for a separate vote?
I'd like to break out the Global 6K Water Race.
Global 6K Water Race. Yes, let's give you a second. And anyone else? Nothing? All right. So, I will take, make, or accept the motion to approve all the items on the consent agenda, with the exception of the parade permit for the annual Global 6K Water Road Race. Salute.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain. It carries. Mr. Nasrullah.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment to just say thank you for the 6K race for water. I'd mentioned it even last year when we were talking about this, but I did a quick Google searches to the number of deaths that occur from waterborne illnesses, and I was amazed. It was 3.4 million globally die from waterborne illnesses, and just providing clean water, what a difference we can make in this world if we could just provide clean water. So, I just want to take my hat off and say thank you for somebody to actually do something. I truly appreciate it, and I think it's a wonderful, wonderful project.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nasrullah. And I would like to thank Unibank for their generous $2,500 gift and the $25,000 gift from Friends of the Seniors for the nutrition and wellness programs at the Senior Center. I think that's absolutely awesome. So, I will accept the motion now to approve Consent Agenda item number two and...
Two and...
Two and three A.
Two and three A. Salute.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain. It carries. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on. Stay a little behind the schedule here, sorry about that. School Committee. Elmwood School Statement of Interest. The board selectmen will consider voting to authorize the Superintendent of Schools to submit the Massachusetts School Building Authority to the Elmwood School Statement of Interest. Dr. Cavanagh. And Ms. Cavanagh. What do you call plural Kavanaugh's? Kavanaugh's?
I'll rephrase. All right, so, we are here because, once again, we would like to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority a statement of interest for the Elmwood School. As you can see in your packet, this doesn't guarantee that we will be invited in or reimbursed in any way, but if you are invited into the pipeline, you do have a 270-day opportunity to take all of the next steps. So, we have already had the school committee approve our submission, and so we also need the Select Board to approve. And in your packet, there is a very, very lengthy motion that needs to be read.
Oh, great. That's exciting for me. I'm going to read it. So, Board, do you have any more? We've done this every single year, and it's a no-brainer. Exactly. To the people that are watching out there, the people that are here, it doesn't cost this town one single cent unless we get called in, and if we do get called in, I pray that we do get called in and get accepted to this, because we really do need this. So...
So, it begins on the page where it says, "Having convened an open meeting..."
Yep. All right. So, "Having convened an open meeting on February 25, 2020, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the Select Board of Hopkin, Massachusetts, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, ought to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated February 28, 2020, for the Elmwood Elementary School located at 14 Elm Street, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Categories 2, 4, and 7, namely, elimination of existing severe overcrowding, prevention of severe overcrowding expected to result from increased enrollments, and replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide a full range for the programs consistent with the state and approved local requirements. And hereby further acknowledge, I'm sorry, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Hopkin and School District to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority." So moved. Second. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain. It carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Board members, if you would be gracious enough, in my haste to try to catch up, there was something I wanted to talk about at public forum. And I hate to have to do this, but we had another longtime Hopkin and Town employee and resident pass away this last week. His name was Franny Pine. He was on the fire department for a long, long, long time as a volunteer. He's just one of the most wonderful guys I've ever met. I happen to be related to him, but he was far more of a friend to me than he was a relative. He is one of the guys that kind of, to me, epitomized what Hopkin used to be. It didn't matter if he was in church or if he was at the liquor store. As soon as the call went out for the fire department for a fire, or an ambulance, or an alarm, no matter what he was doing, he'd jump in his old step-side pickup truck and come on up, and whether we got on a truck or we didn't, and we stayed at the station and manned it, he was a man that I, that not just I, but most in town looked up to for his ability to see the forest through the trees. He had an innate ability to imitate the impressions that he had on some of our local town people were absolutely spot-on, that I would say 96% of the audience here probably wouldn't get, but he was, he really was the best. He had a nickname for me. He called me Dingus, and he, every time, no matter what we did, he would always, he would come up and he would lighten the party, and I will tell, I'm not going to tell many war stories, I'll tell one. I had been suspended through the fire department for driving too fast to a call by our fire chief, Chief McMillan, for 30 days. So, I drove too fast to a call at midnight, so I was suspended for 30 days to drive trucks, relegated to the radio. So, we had a house fire at Jane Moran's house down on East Main Street. So, I got in the back of the squad truck. One of the other senior members, I think, was hurt, injured, so he couldn't go on a truck, so he said to get on the back of the truck, so I got in the back of the truck. Now, there's no one driving the truck at this point. There's Bob Slaman, Chief Slaman's dad, an old-timer who you listen to, Franny Pine, and Artie Pine, and myself, and the old H9. We'd back in, we'd throw our air packs on, get ready to go. We knew it was a working fire. So, we're all up there, and I'm the only one air-packed. I'm all ready to go. So, Franny goes, "Hey, Tedstone, get in the truck and drive this thing." I'm like, "Ah." He was a lieutenant at the time. I'm like, "Ah, jeez, I can't, I'm suspended." He's like, "What do you mean you're suspended?" I said, "I'm not allowed to drive for 30 days." "I don't give a..." "Get in the truck and drive." So, I unair-packed and went down, I drove. I didn't even pull into the driveway, and our fire chief came out. He had a little thingy, when he got mad at me, and he got mad often at me, he would twist his neck, and he came out, and he started pointing and screaming at me, and as I'm sitting there looking at him, taking my medicine, Artie, Franny, and Buzz, which is Chief Slaman's dad, standing right behind the chief, laughing and going like that at me, like, "Ha, ha, we got you in trouble." And they didn't say it quite like that, but it was, it was one of those memories that resonated with me. It was, he just was an awesome, awesome guy, and his wife, Phyllis, you know, the town owes her debt of gratitude, as well as their children, because we, they lost a lot of family time by his unselfishness of just always responding to things for the town, and there wouldn't be a town event without him being there. I'm sorry, I meant to do this at public forum, and I can see him right now, sitting in his living room, watching, because he never missed one of these meetings, and I'd always get a critique after one of the meetings, and he's sitting on his chair right now with his warm Heineken, telling me what a donkey I am for skipping over this. So, you know, those are one of the, that's one of the guys that this town can never ever replace. He just was an awesome guy, and I won't put the chief on, I'd love to put him on the spot, but I know he's probably got similar stories as I, so to Franny, we'll miss you, Phyllis, and Kevin, and Ellie. You guys were lucky to have him in your life as long as you did, so thank you to Franny. Thank you. All right. So, still, I'm going to smile the whole meeting with knowing the comments that he's throwing at me right now. Hopkin Running Club, Parade Permit, Special Temporary Alcohol License, Wade. The Select Board will consider approving a parade permit and special temporary alcohol license application from Wade Marshall on behalf of the Hopkin Running Club for a 10K Road Race around Lake Whitehall on April 11, 2020, from 6:00 AM till 12:00 noon. Alcohol will commence at 10:00 AM. The Hopkin 10K, Hopkin 10K Race supports Andy Welzel Scholarship.
Nice play on words, right?
Yeah. The Andy Welzel Scholarship Fund will begin and end at Victory Field. Alcohol will be supplied and served by TIPS-certified servers from Startline Brewing Company. Tickets will be sold in exchange for beer after IDs are checked and wristbands are attached. Mr. Marshall?
Yes, sir.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
It doesn't seem like a year's gone by where you were here.
It has not. As you remember, the one big storm we had this year, snowstorm, was back about a week before the race was supposed to happen. So, earlier in the week, we talked to the police department, we had them drive the course and give us their opinion, and they said, "We don't," you know, as you know, the roads are pretty narrow back there anyway. So, with the snowbanks and the ice conditions, we made the choice to cancel the race, or to postpone it.
Okay.
And so, you know, in looking at different, other different races around the area, working with different clubs, this was the date we came up with, which was April 11.
Okay. So, this is something that was previously approved that wound up not going off due to weather?
That's correct.
Everything else is the same? There's no, so, I'd love to sit here and make you squirm, but I'm not going to for a long time, so, Select Board members, do you have any questions for Wade?
So, is this a drink and run? Can you stop drinking at 10?
Well, you could, but the race starts at 9, so you might be a little late for the running part.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Parade Permit and Special Temporary Alcohol License for the Hopkin Running Club for the Hopkin 10K Road Race on April 11, 2020, from 6:00 AM to 12:00 noon.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain. It carries. Thank you. Thanks, Wade. Thanks.
I just wanted to make, not necessarily with you, I just wanted to make a comment on these road races. I mean, we're the town for road races, having the marathon here, and I'm just delighted this year to see that these three major little races are being held in totally different areas of town. We have some on North Mill and East Street, we have the Triathlon at the State Park and around the State Park in Ashland, and then we have your race, which is Cunningham Street and around Lake Whitehall, and I love it, because we're not putting out people in the same areas in the same road races and stopping, you know, traffic in neighborhoods and things like that, and this is just delightful, because the spring is, it's a big road race time for us, and to have them spread out around town and...
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve, approve the parade permit and special temporary alcohol license for the Hopkinen Running Club for the Hopkin 10K road race on April 11, 2020, from 6:00 AM to 12:00 noon.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained. It carries. Thank you. Thanks, Wade. Thanks.
I just, I just wanted to make, not necessarily with you, I just wanted to make a comment on these road races. I mean, we're the town for road races, having the marathon here. And I'm just delighted this year to see that these three major little races are being held in totally different areas of town. We have some on North Mill and East Street, we have the triathlon at the State Park and around the State Park in Ashland, and then we have your race, which is Cunningham Street and around Lake Whitehall. And I love it, because we're not putting out people in the same areas in the same road races and stopping, you know, traffic in neighborhoods and things like that. And this is just delightful, because the spring is, it's a big road race time for us. And to have them spread out around town instead of all in one or two places is really wonderful. I thank all of those involved in their mapping out the races. It's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wade. All right. 710, Project Just Because, special temporary alcohol license. The Select Board will consider approving a special temporary alcohol license application from Kolek Cronin on behalf of Project Just Because for the Fourth Annual Shamrock Shindig fundraiser to be held on Thursday, March 12, from 7:00 PM till 10:00 PM at St. John's Parish Hall, 20 Church Street, Hopkinen. Estimated number of attendees is 100. Wine and beer will be donated for this event in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Section 14. TIPS-certified servers will serve the alcohol. Certificate of Liability Insurance has been received. Project Just Because is requesting a free fee waiver for the application fee. Do we have anyone here from there? Mrs. Danahue?
I love this.
Hi there. How are you? Why don't you tell, I mean, yeah, go ahead and tell us a little bit about what's going on. I've seen the sign in front of your yard.
It's our fourth annual. It's a silent auction meal, corned beef, lasagna, a little bit of everything, but with a Shamrock Shindig around St. Patrick's Day, that's the theme. We hope for 100. We have never had 100 yet, so we are being optimistic in our numbers. But it's usually about, I think, 85. The last three years is the most we've had.
Irish entertainment.
Yeah.
Irish food from our Irish chef from Hopkinen.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah, Chris McCall.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Excellent. So the food's been awesome every year.
Yep.
Entertainment's good. Yeah, we've got a couple Irish singers coming in.
Yep.
Local. Ron Ramalad's coming back.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
I think I saw that on Facebook.
Yeah.
And local girls doing Irish step dancing.
Yeah. Oh, that's awesome. So, Mr. Kamala, this is the fourth annual. The first three, I'm going to ask, have there been any really out-of-control issues going on?
No. Steve Slaman's here. He keeps it all on check.
So if the board, does the board have any, anything?
I was at this event last year, and it was great. I really enjoyed it. And I think everybody there enjoyed it. There were a lot of people there, and it looked like everybody was having a great time. So.
We're hoping you all can attend.
It's a great night for a great cause.
When is it?
March 12, Thursday.
12.
Thirsty Thursday.
You pulling your Fresca there, I would assume?
Plenty.
A tab for the husband?
Yeah.
All right. So no other comments? I will entertain a motion.
So, actually, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make two motions.
Go ahead.
The first one, to approve this, approve the special temporary alcohol license for Project Just Because for the Shamrock Shindig on March 12, 2020, from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM at St. John's Parish Hall, 20 Church Street.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained. Carries.
And I'd also like to make a motion for a fee waiver for the Project Just Because application.
Second.
Okay. No further, further discussion? Nope. Good. Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained. It carries. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. Board and committee appointments. Select Board will consider appointments to the following committees, Sustainable Green Committee and the Trail Coordination and Management. Mary Jo, I'm going to let you take this one.
Well, those of you who are here and have put in your application for the Sustainable Green Committee, would you all please stand up? Would you state your names?
Amy Groves. Andrew Hayes.
Okay. So I'm going to make a motion that we appoint Donald Sutherland, Jeff Rowland, Allison LaFlore.
LaFlore.
LaFlore. Okay. Mina?
Koshick.
Koshick. Okay. Andrew Hayes, Amy Groves, Paul Gallagher, Renee D., Peggy Barton, and Rebecca Hoffman as the newest members of this reinvented or brought-back committee.
Reconstituted.
Great.
And I'm so glad that you're, that this committee is being revived and brought back. I think it's great.
Does a motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained. Carries. Thanks, everyone. Thank you. Welcome aboard. Trail and Coordination Management. The Conservation Commission has recommended the appointment of Jamie Rocka as its designated to the Trail Coordination and Management Committee. Ms. Rocka would move from an at-large position on the TCMC to the Conservation Commission representative position, and a vacancy will be created at the at-large position. Is Jamie here? Okay. I don't see it, but, so, Mr. Catino?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jamie Rocka as the Conservation Commission designee on the Trail Coordination and Management Committee, moving from an at-large position with the term expired 6/30/2021.
Is there anyone here from the Conservation Commission?
I have it seconded. Okay. Nope. There aren't. Any further discussion?
Well, I had a question. If she's representing the Conservation Commission on the Trails Coordination Management Committee, but she's not a member of the Conservation Commission, all I want to do is know how is she planning on reporting to the Conservation Commission?
Or they can have a designated. You can appoint somebody.
Yes, I know. You can. They just still should be, has to be a method of getting back the information from one committee to the other. That's all.
Through the chair, we expect that she will provide updates to the Conservation Commission at open public meetings.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Any further conversation? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained. It carries. Good. Select Board FY '21 Comprehensive Budget. The Select Board will review the FY '21, I'm sorry, 2021 Comprehensive Budget. Mr. Kamala?
As you may know, over the past several weeks, at the direction of the Select Board, the Budget Advisory Group has continued to meet weekly to work on the budget. With additional and more frequent staff-level meetings between the school department and town hall, we are continuing to make progress in refining our estimates of revenues and in finding savings on the town side of the expense budget. My comments this evening follow up on our sessions from January 21, when the budget was submitted to the Select Board, January 30, when the Select Board reviewed the operating budget with town departments, and February 4, when you reviewed the capital budget request. Our budget calendar calls for the Select Board to adopt and submit a firm-up proposals for appropriations committee review at your March 10 meeting, which is the following meeting. Tonight, we are seeking your guidance so that staff can develop a document for the March 10 meeting that reflects your policy priorities. As we have stated before, our challenge in developing a path forward, this is after the adjustments to both the town side and the school side of the budget, for, and this was done in multiple public meetings, both by the school committee as well as the meetings that are referenced in the Select Board. Our current budget funds the school at $1,382,000 below the school budget request, and approximately $380,000 on the town side. We have been working to close that gap. As we have discussed at previous meetings, the best news we have received is reflected in the governor's budget, which contained both a significant increase in expected state aid and a modest reduction in the charges the town assessed by the state for cooperative programs. The net impact of those changes improves our budget situation by approximately $480,000. For tonight's discussion, we will factor in this increase, which has not been approved by the legislature. In the event the final state aid is below the expected level, additional expense reductions or revenue increases will be needed. If we start by applying all the new state aid to support increased school spending, we are still way below the school request. And to address this issue, I'm suggesting thematic areas the board's guidance could focus on. These include the following. Number one is the overlay account adjustment. Number two, review overtime with the respective departments that have submitted requests for overtime. Number three, do a closer review of the supplies and expense budgets across all town budgets. Also, on the school side, I would invite the schools to collaborate on limited reductions to the last topmost layer of enhancements included in the school department budgets, those most removed from the student educational experience. Again, I want to underscore that, those most removed from the student educational experience. After deciding on budgetary adjustments along these lines, we will still be, we will still be far short of the amount needed to fund the school budget request. Two ideas come to mind for filling that remaining gap. The first option is to apply funding for these papers from the $831,000 of anticipated receipts currently due under the Legacy Farms Course Community Agreement. This idea has been discussed by the Budget Advisory Committee or group, and I believe there is support for it from the school side of the enterprise. On the plus side, this approach, number one, provides substantially all of the many requests for increased funding from the school department, and provides for all of the requests that directly touch the learning experience. Number two, it provides an FY '21 solution that does not require a proposition two-and-a-half override. Number three, it uses the Horse Community Agreement money for exactly its intended purpose, bridging the cost gaps caused by student enrollment increases way in advance before the town receives the generated new growth. And finally, it could provide a potentially workable path to FY '22 if the new, more aggressive enrollment estimates developed for the school department turn out to be much higher than the actual FY '22 enrollment. On the negative side, this approach would have us paying for over a million dollars of recurring costs in our operating budget from one-time funding sources, including free cash and the Horse Community Agreement. Funding recurring costs, like salaries for new hires, from one-time sources is contrary to the guidance in the financial management policies which have been adopted by the town. Those policies specifically call for us to support ongoing expenses with ongoing revenue streams whenever possible, which is a financial best practice. Under this option, we will be challenged to find a recurring source of funding for this large amount of recurring need in FY '22, along with funding for whatever additional needs arise next year. What is the second option? The second option would be to request a proposition two-and-a-half override to fund the recommended spending level entirely with recurring sources of funding, consistent with the town's financial management policies and with best practices. On the plus side, this approach also provides almost all of the many requests for increased funding from the school department, and provides for all of the requests that directly touch the student learning experience. It would also solve this year's problem this year, rather than putting it off to next year. And it is an approach that would be consistent with our financial management policy and the fiscal stewardship that has earned the town a AAA bond rating. Additionally, this approach would free up one-time money to either directly fund some capital projects we had planned to bond, or to bolster our stabilization fund, which would enhance our financial strength and credit worthiness. Further, this approach would leave all the Legacy Farms HACA funding available to address future one-time education costs related to growth. And we all know we will have those costs in the future. On the negative side, this option requires a proposition two-and-a-half override this year, and creates an additional recurring tax burden for taxpayers, even though one-time funding is available for at least this year. Again, I'm inviting your feedback and discussion on the idea of an additional round of budget adjustments on both the town and the school sides, and on filling the final gap amount with either one-time funding we have available, or through an override. Whether you provide the feedback tonight or after this meeting, I would appreciate your input in time for us to prepare for the March 10 meeting, so that you can send a package to the Appropriations Committee at that time. Again, the meetings of the Budget Advisory Committee are continuing, and at staff level, the superintendent, the school business manager, the CFO, and myself are continuing to meet regularly to try and find a solution to the budget gap.
Okay. So that was a report. We don't need to have back and forth on that, correct?
Correct. Any specific comments or suggestions?
Yeah, I'd like to offer a comment. I think, I think tapping the Horse Community Agreement money right now, as you, as you pointed out, really kind of, it doesn't address the future. And I think what we really need to do is take a comprehensive look at how are we going to continue forward without doing budget overrides, without tap, you know, looking for additional sources of funding. So my feedback would be to go through another round of seeing where can we trim expenses? And, and how can we go forward that way? I'm, I wholeheartedly support the school and the budget that the school has proposed, but I think, you know, we have to look at long-term sustainability financially. And just tapping the, tapping the money that, you know, we have in the back there doesn't seem like a financially responsible thing to be doing.
And we've always, through the chair for a minute, and we've always said we don't like using one-time funding for, for the, for the sustaining budget. You know, but the, you know, the other side is tough to have, have an override. But, but if there's, if there's actually some way to structure the budget so that this extra money that we're throwing in there isn't carried over for the next year and the following year and the following year, you know, if we can look at, look at that, the way we can structure, the way we pay for some of these things, so we're not blowing up the entire budget, I do override. But, you know, but again, having an override is a way for the townspeople to actually have a voice. And for the, and you know, that's the, it gives total transparency, because right now we're just talking numbers and numbers, and people can't see the spreadsheets that we're looking at and the breakdowns. But, you know, at town meeting, people can actually look and see, you know, what we're, the job that we're doing, and have some input on it. Both are tough, and I know you're in a tough position trying to ask people to cut their budgets and, you know, what do you really need? What's a need and what's a want? And at this point, you know, we are right, probably down to the bones, and we are cutting, cutting deep, cutting deeply. But we should really try and do the best we can at, to Mr. Nasrul's point, of another round, if at all possible. And then I think that we bring it to the townspeople.
Good. All right. Thank you, Mr. Kamala. Do you need anything? No? Do you have anything, Meg?
Well, I just, I just wanted to ask all of those who are putting in for capital improvements, if there's anything they can take off and wait another year or so, please do it, and do it now, because the school, the school does come, the high school will be done, the borrowing for the high school will be done in the next two years, and it will open up some money for borrowing. And... And if the capital improvements things can be put off and, and borrow in a year or two, please look at it and let us know, so we can make an adjustment. Thank you.
Okay. Good. Mr. Kamalo.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So now, we will go to the, would we go to the Treasurer's Report? Select Board will receive a quarterly deposits and investment report from the Town Treasurer/Collector. Good evening.
How are you?
How are you?
Good, thank you. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm here tonight to provide an update on the town's deposits and investments for the prior quarter ending December 31st, 2019. Overall, at the end of the quarter, the town had $47.9 million invested and on deposit. Cash deposits within the general fund totaled $34 million, an increase of 1.25 million over the prior quarter. Interest earned on these deposits was $152,000, with an average earned annual interest rate of 1.89%. A large deposit we had was with the Massachusetts Municipal Depositories Trust's Money Market Fund, or MMDT, which provides our highest return opportunity. Per Massachusetts general law, the general fund assets are to be invested with the priority of achieving safety, liquidity, and yield, in that order. Deposits outside of the general fund include trust funds, performance bonds, parks and recreation funds, and student activity funds, which total $3.19 million, with interest rates varying due to size and activity, ranging from 0.24 to 1.97%. Recently, we have seen the Federal Reserve maintaining lower interest rates. In order to adjust for that, we have closed two of the accounts on this report, and moved those funds into the MMDT Money Market Fund, in order to achieve a higher yield on the town's deposits. The town's investments are managed by Bartholomew Investments. They are a Worcester firm that supports many Massachusetts municipalities, and those funds are segregated into two separate accounts, the Trust and Stabilization Funds, and the other Post-Employee Benefits Funds, which is OPEB. The Trust and Stabilization Funds investments are bound by law to invest only in the Massachusetts legal list of investments. Continued due diligence by the finance team has confirmed that the town is compliant with this requirement. Over the quarter, these investments gained an annualized rate of 8.07% in value. The asset allocation ratio of these investments of 32% equities and 68% fixed income represent a conservative risk strategy geared toward maintaining the availability of funds should the need arise, while also gaining a moderate investment exposure for long-term gains. The OPEB Investment Fund is not bound by the Massachusetts legal list of investments, and as such, has access to a broader variety of investment interest instruments. Additionally, due to the less liquid and longer-term requirements of these assets, the fund is invested with an asset allocation weight of 52% equities, 16% alternative investments, and 32% fixed income. Employing this moderate investment strategy yielding, yielded a 15.64% annualized return over the quarter, by gaining a larger exposure to equities while maintaining a balanced investment in fixed income products to safeguard against market downturns. In the coming months, the finance team will be working to update our risk profile and investment policy, in which we will document updated investment policies and procedures, in order to maintain the highest standard of care for the town's investments and deposits, as well as to ensure that we are financially prepared for the future. And that is all I have for you this evening. Be happy to take any questions.
Katrina, you have anything?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good. I, I like some of the holdings.
Good, Fred?
Good.
Thank you.
It's a very extensive report.
Excellent. Nice work. Makes me glad I'm a nurse and didn't go like.
Someone's got to do it.
One quick.
Sure.
We all saw what happened the past two days in the market. I'm assuming that these are all safer and not subject to such drastic fluctuations.
This is the first fight.
You know, how do we kind of stand as far as?
Sure, yeah. So, so the same, the same thing I said above for the priority of, of investment with safety, liquidity, and yield, that goes for both the cash deposits, but also the investments as well. Specifically with the stabilization funds and the trust funds, which are funds that we may need more immediate in the future, in case something arises, those are invested much more conservatively. And then with the OPEB funds, we're looking further in the distance, trying to fund our OPEB liability, so we have the opportunity there to go a little more aggressive. But still, it's a very balanced investment profile across both accounts.
Excellent. Thank you.
And you have Coke and Pepsi.
Correct. Never know.
In fact, if I may, through the chair, a couple of things. I want to take this opportunity to thank the CFO, Tim O'Leary, and the Treasurer, Chris. And here's why I'm thanking them. For many years, we have had the goal of improving our financial transparency by making such reports public. Not only is this report being shared with the Select Board, but it's going, also going to be posted on the town website. If any residents have any questions, please feel free to call Tim O'Leary or Chris.
Excellent. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Annual Town Meeting Articles. Mr. Kamalo.
Yes, included in your pocket is the information identifying Zero Hayward Street, as well as Zero Princeton Road. Is the two parcels that are tentatively on the annual town meeting through the efforts of the Assistant Town Manager Elaine. We reached out to town boards and committees, sought their input on the, the idea of the town disposing of these two properties. The feedback that we received was pretty loud and clear. Various town departments indicated that the town should hold on to these properties. And so, this is the recommendation that we're bringing to the Select Board. We also have been in conversations with one of the property owners, who is strongly interested in having the town dispose of this parcel, and I believe they're here tonight to state their case. Through the chair.
Come on up. Hey there.
Hey, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Very better.
So you're the Hayward Street, correct?
That is correct, sir.
You guys are up here with a puddle issue. Weren't you up here before?
No.
Someone else? All right. So, you have a piece of property on Hayward Street, across the street from Sandy Beach, and the silver pump station. It's about 8,700 square feet, and it's entirely within the buffer zone. Parks and Rec Commission voted in 2019 that it has no present or future operational, just reading out loud. A memo was distributed to several town departments and boards on 12/16/19. Concom and Conservation Administrator expressed the need to retain the parcel for storm water, storm water management purposes, reference previous flooding problems in this area, and the potential need for additional storm water management actions in this location due to climate change impacts. Concom recommended that the town consider delegating management of the entire parcel to the Concom. DPW Director recommended remain, retaining it because of the town drainage infrastructure there, and offered that perhaps the parcel could be divided with a portion sold. And the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board stated it did not have an interest in the lot. The abutters whose request began the process are still interested in purchasing the property. So, our options are proceed with the article to dispose of property, Parks and Rec, and or Select Board Declaration of Surplus, Town Meeting and Vote, Town Meeting Vote, and Article 97, process if needed, eventual sale of lot via RFP process, or to remove the article from the warrant, retain ownership. So, why don't you guys tell us a little bit about what's going on?
So, we've been living at the home for about seven years now. We've got three small children. The lot directly in front of our property is an unkept lot. There is a broken concrete there, weeds are coming through it. Our hope and goal is to then eventually obtain the property, so that we can fix it up. Oftentimes, neighbors come by and ask, you know, if we're ever going to fix it up, and we have to tell them that it's, it's not ours. So that will be our ultimate goal. Ideally, you know, there's a large bit of property there. We have no interest in the entire thing, because there is that culvert located on the property as well, understanding that you all, you all would need to maintain access to it or whatnot. So subdividing the, the parcel would be what I would suggest and propose be done.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Looking at the map, and this is the parcel. Do you live on this side of the parcel, or on this side?
We're right there.
Where you are now.
That's us.
Exactly. So this, this lot is directly out of our front door.
Oh, I'm sorry?
This lot is directly our front door, our home, of the front of our home. So there's no space between our front door and this lot. So, our children walk out where people park their car. You know, it, it's not safe. We don't want to parking, you know, people parking in front of our home like that. There is, there is no divide between our house and this. And we're not wanting to do anything but own it, so that we can maintain it and greenify it, but we want to be able to, to do that, and make it safe for our children to go outside and stuff.
So is your, I mean, just to throw out a name, is your house the Vogel's house?
That's correct.
If I may, through the chair, you know, if, if Concom is, is worried about storm water, and storm water management and such, you know, if, if, if they clear it and make it better, then, then there'll be better infiltration.
It's clear.
Yeah. Because right now, there is, there, it's hard to tell, because there's just so much, the concrete, the pavement there is, is so broken up. There are sections of it that are, are impervious, where, which the storm water would directly run off of it. Again, our goal is to then remove all that, that debris, throw around some, some soil, some wildflowers, whatnot, and just make it look more presentable.
Our concern is that if we don't, if, if we spoke to the Conservation's Committee, because we wanted to, you know, be partnerships with them, but if, if it's, if we don't own it, then we won't be able to maintain it and keep it up. And so, they had said, well, maybe we could have the DPW come and mow it once a year. I don't want a risk of ticks and the danger, you know, I mean, we, it, again, our children literally walk out this door and go to the beach, and enjoy Sandy Beach and the lake. So, we, it's a very unique property. It's a really odd property line, and it really does look like it is truly just an extension of our home, and we just want to keep it safe like that.
Mr. Kamalo. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Actually, I was going to ask, Mr. Kamalo, would we be able to grant them an easement to maintain the property? Is that something that we could do, rather than dispose of it? Because I would like to maintain some, some ownership. Basically, you know, it has the, the drainage characteristics, it acts as a buffer to, you know, to the lake. If we were to grant an easement, and kind of say, here's what you can do.
How about a hundred-year lease, or something like that?
Well, no. We want to, I think we want to, well, what I want, what I'm thinking is, I want to, I want to maintain the characteristics of, the functions of the, not the characteristics.
Right, characteristics, that's what I meant.
The functions that we're, that the Conservation and, and, you know, all the other town departments are, are saying it functions as. Maintain that, but allow it to be maintained, so it looks decent. I completely understand, I mean, looking at it, it, that's your front yard. So I completely hear where you're coming from, but at the same time, I think that there may be a happy middle ground to maintain the functions that we, we needed to.
Sure, yeah. Through the chair. I, I think what I'm hearing tonight is perhaps some additional clarification on the neighbor's One way forward would be to pursue what you're saying, have a sit-down with town departments, gain a clear understanding of how the town believes that this particular parcel will help in addressing the storm water management issues in that area, and see if there's a way in incorporating your maintenance concerns into the town's solution.
So, an idea that I had, based on our, so I don't know what our stance is on selling town land to private people. I don't know if we make it a habit to bring that or not. Abutters.
We, we offer to abutters.
Okay. So, we just heard that we were a million and a half or better in the hole this year. If we could sell these guys that piece of property for $141,000.
Bank this type of, it has to be.
They have a placeholder.
The, the other property on this is like much bigger than ours, and is for like $4,000.
Oh, okay. That's not going to help us much.
So we're hoping that the database is wrong.
That's what it said on ours, too.
I think it's the water on it, too.
Water on it?
No, there's, there's no, no utilities.
I mean, there's the, the stream, but like the DPW said, what we're hoping to is break it up. We only want what's.
Directly immediate.
Directly immediate in front of our home. We don't want the other side of the stream.
So I don't know. I'm looking at this thing, and it says it's.
It does, but.
It's $141,000. So for $141,000, I'm going to override the board and say you can buy it.
I'm hoping that's incredibly wrong, because it's.
Through the chair, this is also Article 97 land. Am I correct? That's going to actually require that we go to the legislature, Massachusetts Legislature, and get a two-thirds majority in order to be able to dispose of it. So, that's why I'm looking at some things that's a little, little less onerous on the part of the town.
This is the area where they have culvert problems and things, too, as much as it.
Exactly. And also, given that we, as a community, now have to address the new storm water management requirements, I can understand why both Conservation and DPW are opposed to the town disposing of the parcel. However, I think as has been suggested, now that there's a clear understanding of your intent, let's see whether the solution that the town has for storm water management in the area can incorporate your appearance concerns.
If I may, one more, one more thing, or comment through the chair. And, and if the town does want to retain it, let's keep it up. You know, let's not, let's not make the, have the worst property around Sandy Beach be the town property. I think the town property should be one of the best ones, because we definitely have the largest and best crews available to, to keep it up. That, it's, it's sort of shameful that it's the entrance to Sandy Beach, and it's the, the egotist property. So, no matter how it comes out, I just, I hope that the, that we can work well as a town and, and put our best foot forward.
Don't park any tanks on it.
Yeah.
That's the area where the tanks.
I know, I know where it is, yeah.
I like the leasing idea, leasing a small portion of it to these people, if we could work something like that.
Leasing would also be a disposition of land, that's the problem.
That makes sense.
Yeah, same thing. Same thing. 97 was on the bottom next to like that.
What are we doing?
We are requesting the board remove the article from the warrant, and allow town staff through the town manager's office to coordinate efforts between the town departments concerned about storm water management, and the, the neighbors who are interested in ensuring that the, the, the parcel is, is, is kept where.
Need a motion from us to remove it?
Please.
Okay. Good with that? Okay, Mr. Katrina?
Okay. I'll make the motion to remove, well, that, I guess it's, that's only part of, part of, but remove the Zero Hayward Street from the, from the article, because there's another property on there also, so I don't want to say remove the article. So, second, sorry.
Any further discussion from the board? Nope. All favor? All opposed? Abstained, carried. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Mr. Kamalo, what's the second part of this? Zero Princeton Road?
Oh, yes. It's a piece of landlocked property that's adjacent to other land owned by the town. Similarly, an abutter has requested to acquire it. Right now, it's under the jurisdiction of the Select Board, so it's not an Article 97 property, but the Concom would like it to be. So their recommendation is that it be retained, and they would like to take management responsibility of this piece and the surrounding town pieces, as a buffer to the lake, and to deal with storm water recharge and similar issues.
Elaine, where's Princeton Road?
So it doesn't exist.
It's not there. It's been rescinded.
But it's behind, let's see.
Off the lake?
Yeah.
It's off a lake?
Well, the lake is over here.
Which one?
Masanah.
Okay.
And the thing is, this is the property we're looking at, and they have access, but there's no frontage, so that, that can't be built on. Somebody else is looking at that property.
It's a paper.
But, without this road, which was rescinded at town meeting. All these properties belong to the town. They can combine them all into one large parcel that. They can combine them all into one large parcel that in the future, Conservation makes a really good piece of conservation land.
Okay. Mr. Kamalow, what's your suggestion on this?
That we recommend the board remove the article from the town meeting warrant.
You guys go to that?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll take a motion.
I move that we remove Zero Princeton from the town warrant article.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
One quick one. Who put this one on the warrant? Did people get like signatures or something to make sure they were not over?
No, we, yes, the select board did. This was based on inquiries made by the abutters.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained, carries. Thank you.
Do we need another motion to transfer jurisdiction of this to the one of the Conservation one of it?
Not at this point.
No.
All right, Town Manager Report. Kamalow?
Yeah, through the chair. Two items. The first is Main Street Corridor Project. In your packet, we included two simple letters for the offer of just compensation. This is in relation to the easements that are required for the Main Street Corridor Project. We offered the two options in the following manner. The first letter includes a donation, an option to donate. Would you understand that in previous meetings, member Brian Hare stated strongly that he was opposed to the donation option? However, we are recognizing that there are entities that had already offered to donate their properties, and that's why we included that option. The other option, put simply, does not include a donation. So my request is for the board's guidance in terms of which letter to be sent out.
So you want, there's one or two letters. There's one that has an option for someone to donate...
Yes.
And one that does not have an option for somebody.
Correct.
Well, I think, I would think that we would want to have an option for someone to donate if they want to donate. If someone wants to donate their land, doesn't it make sense to...
Yes, I agree. I think, and it says it's an option to donate, that they have the option to accept just compensation as well. So I don't, I mean, if somebody wants to give it to us, I don't think we...
We should be forced to pay it.
Yeah.
So I would entertain a motion to leave the... Yeah, there you go. You in agreement?
Yes. I've done these in other towns, and they always have an option to donate.
So I guess we would make a motion to send that letter out, including the option for someone to donate their property.
Okay. So moved.
Second? Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained, carries.
The second request in relation to the Main Street Corridor through the chair is to request the board to set the compensation budget at 1.6 million.
Compensation budget at 1.6 million. And that level is determined by how?
We have concluded the appraisal process, submitted the appraisal reports to MASTDOT. MASTDOT has certified those reports as complying with the MASTDOT requirements, and we're ready to provide the information to the property owners now.
Okay. Still moved? Any other potential motion?
Make a motion to establish the aggregate amount of just compensation that will be offered to the affected property owners at 1.6 million dollars.
Okay. Second? Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained, carries. Mr. Kamalow?
The next issue is the policy review of the marijuana testing laboratories and marijuana research facilities policy. This is a document that we shared with the board and the public at your last meeting. We have not received any additional comments. We are seeking the board's approval of the policy so that we can implement it going forward.
Board?
Through the chair. So at the last meeting, I had given a couple thoughts that I had. One was notification to the abutters of the community meeting, and currently, we have abutters within 300 feet of a closed facility. And I was suggesting we have 500 feet, just to give, 300 feet's really not a lot of space. And if anyone is living, I would think within 500 feet, that's enough. That'd be a little more encompassing to allow more community input. The idea behind these community meetings is to get a feel for the community and what people living directly around it think. So I would suggest that we increase the radius of notification to the abutters of the community meeting to be 500 feet. And I would, I don't think it needs to be in the policy, but I think maybe when we're negotiating those community agreements, that we would want to have limits on how much product that they're allowed to have on site, because we heard directly from the proponent that they do not need to have large quantities of marijuana on site. So I wouldn't mind it being in the policy that we have a limit, but if we don't want to go that route, then at least use the host community agreement to address that.
If I may through the chair, one of the things that I want to be careful of, even though you're the one that said we should have marijuana testing, is if there's another testing facility comes in and they look at ours and say, oh, they have the maximum they could have is a few grams, and this is a facility that might be testing potencies and that for many other, for many companies, you know, and I think we should probably attach it to a level of security that they have there if there's, you know, and match it to that, but not to make strict numbers, because I don't want, you know, we have a million square feet of open space up on South Street. I want to make sure that we can, we don't...
I understand, but I think that we don't need to have like multiple pounds of it. We were told that he only needs a...
Oh, well, there was just one company.
Right.
But we'll make sure if there's another company that comes in and they have, like, 10 or 20 grams from 100 different companies, that adds up to that number that we're not, that goes over, and then they say, well, we're going to go to South Borough instead. You know, but if they have security on hand and they have, you know, and all that, I think that, so that should be part of the discussion, I mean.
I don't have an issue with your, I don't have an issue with that. I think we could tie it to security, too. That would work fine for me. I just don't want it to be an attractive nuisance for people to want to try to come in and rob.
We have jewelry stores, too, in the town, yeah.
Elaine, we have a bylaw already on the radius of buyers for alcohol, alcohol businesses and all of that, including churches and schools within so many feet. Is that 500 feet?
Not sure with the history of alcohol.
No. But I know for every special permit, it's 300 feet.
And we have a couple instances where it's wider, for example, for drive-through windows, it's a bigger radius. So at certain times, the community has decided that a wider radius is wide for others.
I know it's 300 feet, but then it's 300 feet, but churches and schools beyond 300 are included in that sometimes, depending on what the...
I remember that from plenty of boards. I think part of the reason I suggest that we widen the radius is, I think as a whole, Hockington voted overwhelmingly not to allow dispensaries or anything to do with recreational marijuana, and I want to respect the will of the people. I think even when it came to the vote on whether or not Massachusetts should legalize it, I think Hockington said, no, we should not.
And we had, people were saying two miles. And we were trying to bring it up, and it was just like...
Well, I mean, while my personal views may differ, I think that our job's here is to represent the will of the people. The people have spoken, and so at least give them an opportunity, give more people an opportunity to speak.
And right now, this looks like it's only going up on South Street in that area anyway.
But all that said, I am very much in favor of bringing this company in. I think that it's a good company. I think they've demonstrated security measures, and I think it's, I think there's nothing wrong with this. But in representing the people, I think we should also be mindful of who lets to know what's coming.
Yep.
Great.
Good.
Good deal.
Violent agreement.
So good. So that's it for the Town Managers' Report, right?
Yes, I wanted to clarify that we did look into the abutter notification radius requirement, and what Town Council clarified to us was that, yes, the law does reference the 500 feet requirement, however, the regulations that we put forth do not. Town Council still said to us that it's up to the town to decide which radius it would prefer.
Right. So we can be more restrictive than what the state allows, and I would suggest that we would be, just given the votes that this town has taken.
Okay. So since it is 500 feet?
Yep.
Okay.
Do we all, I mean, is the rest of the board in agreement?
Yes. Mr. Cutino?
Sure.
Yes.
Good.
Okay, so we should get... No, I think we, I think we're supposed to make a motion to... Yeah, to approve the Select Board policy entitled Marijuana Testing Laboratories and Marijuana Research Facilities Process and Host Community Agreement, and adding to that 500-foot radius.
Butter notification.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained, carries. Good. Liaison reports. Mr. National.
No, I had said one item. It's the Hockington Cultural Council's having their annual shindig. My first.
Mr. Cutino?
I don't have any this year, this week.
Really?
I know.
Move it on.
I was at the assessors' meeting. Adam Monroe joined me to meet the board, and we had a discussion on the stipend thing, and the reason it came up was because it's new with the Department of Revenue, and the Department of Revenue felt that because they insist that the assessors go to school and take these courses, that they be basically reimbursed for them. The town pays for them anyway, so they, the article is in, they may or may not rescind it, but it's okay. I mean, it's, they kind of decided that it's okay either way. They won't get it. They will do whatever the town is doing and decides for stipends.
And I don't have any. So future board agenda items. Anybody? Obviously, we're going to stay up to date on all the budget stuff, major quarter stuff, and the rest of the warrant articles, making sure we get the wording. Yep. So Mr. Cutino, if you would work your magic on the last item of our agenda.
Meeting to adjourn. A motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Any further board discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained, carries. Thank you.
Thanks for watching. Bye-bye. Hope everything's good.